I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November 5th, 2013 at 6:30. Roll call?
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tierpenny.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Let's see, Reverend Stallworth. Tonight our invocation will be given by our attorney. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Lord, we ask that you give the leaders of the City of Tarpon Springs pure hearts, clear minds, and steadfast wills that all their work may be to your honor and glory. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to proclamations. The first one we have is Veterans Day. This proclamation reads, proclamation, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas on Veterans Day we pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the men and women who in defense of our freedom have bravely worn the uniform of the United States, and whereas America's veterans answered the call when asked to protect our nation and stood tall in the face of grave danger and enabled our nation to become one of the greatest force for freedom in human history. Members of the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard have answered the high call into serve and have helped secure America at every turn. And whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their quiet courage and exemplary service, we also remember and honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense. These brave men and women made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit. On Veterans Day, we remember these heroes for their valor, their loyalty, and their dedication. And whereas with respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service members have made to the cause of peace, freedom around the world, now therefore I, David O. Archie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2013, as Veterans Day." And we ask therefore, Tammie Wood. Oh, yes, sir. Come forward and receive this. Not sure if you'd like to say something?
Would, would. Thank you very much.
All right.
Members, thank you very much.
You can go to the podium. Well, they, for the camera.
This is the second you have received this, and I'm very, very thankful to you for your choosing me for this. Monday, of course, is Veterans Day. The ceremony will be as usual, 11 o'clock at the Veterans Monument Craig Park. It'll be a little different one this year. Just before Memorial Day, I had some rather distressing news in my family, personal immediate family. And it got very bad over the summer and caused me to have some medical issues develop, as well as emotional problems. Problems have alleviated themselves somewhat, but in keeping with that, when I started to get everything ready for this Monday, I was making too many mistakes, writing things three and four times if they weren't still right. So I had a conversation with Commander Michael Fackless, American Legion Post 46, Tarpon So as of Monday, at the end of the ceremony on Monday, I'm stepping down after 10 years. And American Legion Post, Commander Fackless or one of his officers, will take it over so the American Legion continuity is still there. I want to thank everybody here who's always supported us, all our veterans, and I know you'll all be there Monday because we've got free food like always from the Elks Lodge. Great barbecue they put on, great barbecue. So, thank you very, very much for this, and thank you for your 10 years of loyalty.
I'd just say it's sad to hear that you are stepping down, but we definitely appreciate all that you've done to continue to bring recognition to the veterans and what they've done for our country. So I would say personally, thank you.
You better stand and relax on questions.
All right.
Any other comments?
Any public comments on this item? We'll move to our next proclamation, which is addendum item number one, Tampa Bay Rays' Day. And this proclamation reads, proclamation, "City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas more than 300 volunteers from the Tampa Bay Rays, Citizens Alliance for Progress Incorporated, organizers from Kaboom, residents of the Tarpon Springs community, will gather on Saturday, November 16th, to build a new playground at the Union Academy Family Center, 401 Martin Luther Kane Jr. Drive. The new playground design is based on drawings created by children who participated in the Design Day event in September. And whereas play is critical to the physical, emotional, and cognitive development of children, and whereas Tarpon Springs is working to create resources to support healthier lifestyles, including parks and playgrounds, so our citizens have ample amenities for outdoor recreation. Whereas the 300 children served by Union Academy Family Center need playground equipment to enjoy, and whereas the Tampa Bay Rays and the Rays Baseball Foundation are committed to building strong bonds with the community through meaningful interactions and charitable contributions. And whereas volunteers from the Union Academy Family Center, Citizens Alliance for Progress, the Tampa Bay Rays, and the community have worked with hundreds of volunteers to build a new playground in one day, and whereas the youth-inspired playground at the Union Academy Family Center will contribute to a stronger community and healthier, happier children, now therefore I, David O. Archie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 16th, 2013, as Tampa Bay Rays' Day." With that, are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we will go to presentations. Item number, item number two is internal auditor, cultural services, and recreation audit.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. Is that okay? My name is John Weber. I'm a partner with Crow Horwath, and along with me tonight is Michael Semenero, senior manager with the firm as well. We both worked on this engagement, though Michael, of course, did the harder work, the brunt of the work. But we just want to briefly talk to you about the results of that. Our scope was an internal audit over the Cultural Services Department as well as the Recreation Department. As it relates to the Cultural Services Department, we kind of focused our test on tests of transactions, including grant activity, procurement card purchases, ticket sales, contracts, events, things of that nature, and also looking at the controls in place, you know, to make sure you've got good, strong controls over these activities. For the Recreation Department, we focused on point-of-sale type transactions, the rec-track system, how it's being used, as well as the controls in place over the collection of money and the programs, things of that nature. So, overall, we did have some recommendations related to the Cultural Services Department. In our internal audit, we do indicate to you that with the Recreation Department, we really determined there was, you know, very good, strong controls in place from all of our testing with that. So, I'm going to have Michael talk a little bit about some of our recommendations for you.
Good evening, everyone. So as John mentioned, we did develop some recommendations as it relates to Cultural Services. I wanted to first hit some of the high-risk areas that we came up with. Hopefully you've had a chance to read through the report. If you have any questions as we go through this, let me know. The first opportunity for improvement related to what we're calling the performance profitability analysis and ticket pricing for the Cultural Services area. There were a few different areas that we thought there could be some improvement as it relates to these specific subjects. The first item relates to the fact that there was a lot of, I guess, manual entries being made in Excel to kind of track the performances, ticket prices, ticket sales. We thought it would be better and more efficient to set up the financial reporting system in a way that it could be tracked directly in the financial reporting system rather than it being separate and tracked manually in Excel. So that was really our first recommendation as it relates to the performances. When we did go through the spreadsheets that were being tracked manually, it was a little bit difficult to reconcile that information back to the financial system. So that's just another reason why it should just be done directly in the financial system rather than being tracked in two different places. And then lastly, as it relates to ticket prices, we thought it would be more beneficial to the city to make sure that there was a documented process behind how ticket prices were set. There is some analysis that's currently done, but it should be more formalized, and that should be documented and maintained on file. So that was our first recommendation. The second high-risk area relates to ticket, split-ticket calculations, or what we're calling split-ticket charges. There was one event that we looked at where the revenue sharing calculation was done prior to the actual performance, and during that time, the information, the ticket price, and some of the ticket transactions changed. So that particular analysis should be done after the performance is done, especially when there's a contract in place for hiring performers. So I think based on some of our review of the management response, management is taking care of these, and they have some remedies in place going forward. If you'd like, I could go through some of the other moderate and lower-risk areas if you'd like. If that would be beneficial?
You could.
Sure. So, one of the, the first one on page, and this is on page four, this is a very low-risk item. One of the things we did was we looked at contracts that were in place. There was a contract with a local hotel to provide rooms for some of the actors and some of the performers, and then they would be given advertising space. The latest contract we had for that, I think, was one or two years old, so we're just saying that there should be a current contract in place for that. One of the other areas that we looked at is ticket discounts. The way that the ticket system is set up, someone can actually go in, buy a ticket, and say that there may be a senior citizen when they're really not. So there needs to be some controls implemented within the ticket, the ticketing system where there's controls where people can't just say that they should get a discount when there's no verification that they should indeed receive the discount. So that's really the main, the main area as it relates to ticket discounts. The next one, which is number three, as part of our procedures, we went through to make sure that transactions were actually coded correctly in the financial reporting system. We rated this moderate because there were some incorrect coding where things were just recorded to the wrong expense or maybe the wrong revenue. So this is a relatively easy fix. It's just making sure that there is a review in place to make sure that things are being handled correctly. And then the last area, and this is another moderate-risk area, relates to grant matching and expense eligibility. The Cultural Services Center does receive grants. They're not large enough that they would actually hit what we would call the single audit requirements, meaning that they're not enough for it to be included in your annual financial statement audit. There were, there's certain processes in place that relate back to what I discussed earlier about the manual accounting for certain things. There needs to be controls in place, especially when there's a grant that's received, where there's a matching requirement, meaning that the grantee will, or the grantor will give the city a certain amount of money, but then the city must match it. There wasn't a good tracking system in place to make sure that that was happening. So that's why we're including a recommendation, which kind of goes back to what I said earlier about making sure that things are being tracked in one place where reports can be ran and the information can be reviewed. So that's kind of a high-level summary of all the recommendations that we have. Does anyone have any specific questions?
I don't have any, but I want to thank you for this, and hopefully, we're looking for all of these things to be corrected so that we can minimize any type of risks associated with the Cultural Services Department, so.
Sure.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. My question would be for you, Mr. La Couris, reading through the report and listening to Mr. Semenero. I definitely think there's positive areas that we can implement some of their suggestions. And my question is how we move forward and go about that. Is that just something that because it was found in the internal audit report that we go ahead and implement, or?
We've already given them responses about how we'll satisfy and implement that, and we're planning to address all of them, and we've given them a summary of what we do, and I'm sure they'll be, I'm sure they'll be coming back at a later time to ensure we did what we said we would do. But every one of them been answered with a response to correct that deficiency and how we're going to deal with it, and that's already in place and ready to put into effect.
Video? Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Well, again, thank you for the report.
Thank you very much. And we wanted to thank the, both departments for their cooperation during the audit, so it's very helpful.
The next item is consent agenda. First is satisfaction release of liens, attorney fees, Thompson, Seismol, Gonzalez, and hearing LLP invoice number 71741. Five is special events, seafood festival, Merchers Association, November 9th and 10th, light up the bayou, Sunset Hills Elementary School, December 24th. There's snow placed like Tarpon Springs, City of Tarpon Springs, and Chamber of Commerce, that's December 6th. D is holiday boat parade, City of Tarpon Springs Recreation Division, December 6th. Six is authorized purchase of office and educational consumables through Florida State Contract number 618-000-111. Seven is award file number 14000. Nine dash N dash DM, single-source purchase of tasers. Eight is renewed city of Tampa bid number 41081810, automotive replacement parts. Nine is award file number 140012-n-dm, single-source purchase of lift stations supervised with control and data acquisition system. Ten is award file number 140014-n-dm, single-source purchase of chemicals, order control. Eleven is award file number 140015-n-dm, single-source purchase of chlorinator, equipment and service. Twelve is award file number 140013-n-dm, single-source purchase of pumps and repair parts, Myers. Thirteen is authorized and increase to file number 090093-b, lavatory services, water, wastewater analysis. Fourteen is authorized purchase of various vehicles and equipment through Florida Sheriff's Association Contract number 13-11-0904. Fifteen is authorized purchase of various vehicles and equipment through Florida Sheriff's Association Contract number 13-21-0904. Are there any items anyone would like to pull? Are there any public comments on this item? Then Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Special consent agenda, item number 16, bid number 140001-b-dm, fire rescue boat and trailer.
Mr. Jakis and our Fire Chief Rick Butcher is here for any questions. Basically, we went off to the bid process, and you see the winning bid, and although there was only one bid, it is the company that had the GSA contract for small craft marine equipment that we could have went to anyway, but we decided to put it out for bid, including notifying local people to bid on it. That's the bid we have, and pretty much in all the analysis, the Fire Chiefs and other boats and other purchases is consistent with all that we needed and what commissioners expressed that they wanted to make sure they had in wake of the incident that we had there before. So if you have a question about the process, Mr. Jakis is here. If you have a question about the fire boat, Chief Butcher's here, and glad to answer those questions.
Does anyone have a, Bathe?
Just quickly, will this boat be outfitted for the, for the, the police as well? Was it reviewed by them at all or for rescue? When we talked about the boat initially, it was for fire and police. That's what I'm asking.
Basically, it's got some capability, if you want to, it's got some capabilities to get the ocean out there, do it, it's not, it's not, it's not put together as an actual patrol boat.
Yeah, I understand that.
But it's the ability to get their divers out there if they need, get that, and can be used for the various things that the police would be able to use.
Yes, sir. It won't, it won't have any mounted armory or any kind of a defense system put in there, but we obviously will have a great cooperation between our departments.
And just when do they think they'll have it ready by?
I'm sorry?
When, when do they think it'll, it'll, it'll be ready?
I believe it's 180 days.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
Thank you. I first wanted to say I'm excited about getting this, getting this accomplished. I think this is important for the city. I think in light of what happened at the Sponge Docks, I think this is going to be a very important thing for the city. One question I was going to ask is when it would be operational, and I understand 180 days. Where will the boat be kept?
Well, we're going to keep it at the public safety facility right now. We're going to have to do some jockeying of our equipment between the two stations, and then when we get our Station 71, obviously, we'll have more room. But we're going to keep it in-house. We're going to try to, we're going to keep it inside out of the elements.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. I would just say that I'm pleased with the process as far as the city reaching out to local belt builders. That was something that I thought was important and something that I was actually hopeful for to, I was hoping that one of the local belt builders would potentially step in and come to the plate and, and, you know, build it to specs. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, but I am pleased that the city reached out to them. The only other thing that I would say is it's always, it's always disappointing when we put out a bid of this size and we only have one responder, and that always, you know, raises a little bit of question in my mind. But if you continue to look in the backup and you see that, you know, there was broadcasted to 80 different people, and there was eight that actually held plans, so that eases my mind a little bit. And those, those would just be my comments. Thank you.
Any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 17, Tarpon Highlands Utility Payments, Extension of Waiver of Penalties.
Basically, what I'm asking you tonight is to renew for another six months the waiver of penalties. As you see from the backup information, we have been getting steady payments of what is owed to us. In fact, we're down to the, to the sixth, I think, 6,900 mark, and in fact, we've been told an extra check is possibly on our way to us. The biggest, the biggest issue why we needed more time was the Tarpon Highlands, too, had to gain control of their homeowners association from the previous person, which was, obviously, there, we had no, we could not deal, we could talk with them and stuff, but we couldn't deal officially with them until they got control of the homeowners association. And that was not an easy process, and probably the whole six months, we were trying to get together to negotiate things, and we did make some progress, and we did a lot of things, but they couldn't enter into anything with us or deal with us until they got control. They've got control of the homeowners association now, so we expect things to step up. Again, they've been constantly paying, and somewhere around, wherever it was, 18, 19,000 owed to the city, we're down to 6,900. So we've made great progress in those six months. There's no sense of throwing penalties back on there, and, you know, that's not taxpayers' money that, that we're out with the penalties. We're actually getting paid, there serves no purpose to add a bunch of penalties while this is working out. Mr. Smith is, we're all working towards the agreement of separating the meters and getting this issue taken care of, and that's why we're asking for another six months to finalize this thing and, and get it finalized, and probably by that time, most of the arrears will be paid off, and the taxpayers will be made whole, and we'll have a new situation with separated meters out there.
Thank you for your help, Steph, helping continue to move this process along. I know it's one that all of us will be glad when it's over and we're back to business as usual, but any questions? Anyone have, any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval? Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Order this in resolution, item number 18, resolution 2013-50, application 13-62, Tarpon Place, Tarpon Place North, conditional use application for affordable housing density bonus and 25% setback reduction for eight units on .381 acres at the northeast corner of South Gross and East Boyer Street. And this is quasi-adjudicial?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2013-50, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application number 13-62 for a conditional use to increase density, reduce required setbacks, excuse me, and reduce parking for an affordable housing project, Tarpon Place North, consisting of eight units to be located at the northeast corner of South Gross Ave and East Boyer Street, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. This is quasi-adjudicial, as are the next two items on the agenda, items 19 and 20. So I'll read the quasi-adjudicial procedure. I'd like for you to stand and be sworn if you're going to testify on any of those three applications at one time, and I'll try to keep track of who was sworn. This is a quasi-adjudicial proceeding where the commission acts in a quasi-adjudicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the, excuse me, commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-adjudicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if that evidence at the hearing demonstrate the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which will be followed tonight at this quasi-adjudicial hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses. The city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point in the proceedings. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this time, I'd ask the commission to disclose any exploitative communications on resolution 2013-50. Seeing none, I'll ask the witnesses to stand and raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is application 13-62 for Tarpon Place.
This is application 13-62 for Tarpon Place North. Project is located at the northeast corner of South Gross Ave and East Boyer Street. Property is owned RM15. This is a conditional use application that's being submitted by the Tarpon Springs Housing Authority for an affordable housing bonus density, a parking reduction, and a 25% setback reduction to be applied to the project area. The property contains .381 acres, and the project itself is an eight-unit apartment building. This one is known as Tarpon Place North. There's a companion application that will be heard next as Tarpon Place South that's very similar. The adjustments to density, parking, and setbacks are part of our Affordable Housing ordinance that was established in 2007. The effective density of the property, if the Affordable Housing Density Bonus is granted, is 21 dwelling units per acre. The proposed parking reduction is reduced from 14 spaces to nine spaces, and as stated the proposals for 25% reduction in the building setbacks. This project is located in close proximity to the Oak Ridge Estates, a project that was recently completed and was also the subject of an award for the, from the Thousand Friends of Florida to the Housing Authority. These two projects really almost will be a mirror of those, of the architecture and the style of development, so it should fit in very nicely with the surrounding properties. Under the standards for review, under the conformance with the requirements of the Land Development Code, as I've already stated, the project does comport with the allowable increase in density, setback reductions, and reductions in parking under that code. As part of the project, or any affordable housing project, they will have to execute a recordable agreement in a form acceptable to the city that binds the developer to certain restrictions for affordable housing bonus densities in affordable housing projects. The second criteria is the use to which the property may be put is appropriate and compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. As I stated, this is basically kind of an expansion of the existing project there in the Oak Ridge Estates area, very similar architecture, and these projects, if you've been out and looked at them, they fit really nicely into the neighborhood. The style of architecture is kind of a bungalow type, and it's just really a dramatic improvement in the area. There are, the project does, is consistent with our objectives and goals of the housing element of the comprehensive plan. We don't find any adverse impacts on environmental or historical resources, nor is there any adverse impacts on the ability of the city to provide public facilities or any adverse expected impacts on property values in the area. The Planning and Zoning Board did review this on October 21st and did recommend approval by a 4-0 vote. Some of the issues that were discussed were more site plan related issues about stormwater, the treatments for the alley, and things of that matter. We explained to the Planning and Zoning Board that those will be covered at site plan review, this project if approved, and if it receives the funding and goes forward, it will come back to the board for site plan review in the future where those types of issues will be addressed. The parking reduction was questioned. Ms. Weber explained to the board that based on their observations and experience with their existing housing projects, that really the parking is more than adequate. There's simply most of these units, the folks that live there will have one car best, some won't have any at all, so we're very comfortable with the parking reduction. The staff recommendation and the Planning and Zoning Board recommendation is to approve the application. There are two basic conditions on the recommendation of approval. One is the city, the applicant must execute a recordable agreement in a form acceptable to the city binding upon the developer and subsequent purchase successors and the signs of the development that it will comport with Section 71.03. There's actually a whole list. There's like five conditions of that, rather than read them all into the record. They're in the resolution, but it's certifying that it will remain an affordable housing development in accordance with Section 71.03. The second condition is that if an application for site plan approval in conjunction with the conditional use is not received within one year of approval, the conditional use will be considered to have lapsed, and reapproval in accordance with Section 209.00 N3 is required. Conditional use is approved in conjunction with the site plan shall remain in effect until the site plan, provided the site plan complies with Section 210.05. Lastly, the resolution should have included the attachment of the concept plan that was included in the backup. I'll just note that that does need to be added to the resolution as an exhibit or as attachment A. With that, I'll stop there, and I'll answer any questions at the appropriate time in the public hearing process. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to question the city staff? Applicant wish to make a presentation of its own? Are there any members of the public in opposition to the application? Any members in support? Seeing none, does anybody wish to make a closing statement? Mr. Mayor?
I really don't have any questions. I just, you know, thank again, I had the opportunity before when Ms. Weber and the rest of the Housing Authority was getting an award for their efforts within Union Academy Neighborhood and to thank them for what I consider is going to be another great project. Any questions? Commissioner Terapany?
Ms. Vincent, could you elaborate a little bit on the conditional use process in terms of, I think on some of these projects before when they're tied to funding or things of that nature, a conditional use is good for up to one year, correct?
The conditional use is good for up to one year, but you can also request an extension for, I believe, up to six months. As long as it hasn't expired, the applicant can request the board of commissioners to do an extension to extend that out. So that is available if necessary.
So typically, though, if we get to, like, if six months down the road, if they come in and site plan's approved and everything like that, and the project's underway, then they're good?
Correct.
But if they don't do any of that within one year's time, then they would have to either file for an extension or get reapproved?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There are no questions, then shall we entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number nineteen is resolution 2013-50, application 13-62, Tarpon Place North, conditional use, application for affordable housing density bonus and 25% setback reduction for eight units on 3.81 acres at the northeast corner of South Gross and East Boyer. Quasi-adjudicial.
That's the one we just did. Did I do the presentations backwards? Hold on.
Let me look and see them, because somebody wrote it there. Both of them the same now, so. Resolution 2013-51, application 1363, Tarpon Springs, Tarpon Place South, conditional use application for affordable housing density bonus and 25% setback reduction for eight units on .488 acres at the northwest corner of South Gross Ave and East Lime Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2013-51, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application 13-63 for conditional use to increase density, reduce required setbacks, and reduce parking for an affordable housing project, Tarpon Place South, consisting of eight units to be located at the northwest corner of South Gross Ave and East Lime Street, providing for conditions, providing for findings, and providing for an effective date. We've had the quasi-adjudicial announcement. At this time, I'd ask the commission to disclose any ex parte communications on this application. Seeing none, will there be any witnesses testifying in this application that did not testify at the previous application? Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is application 13-63 for Tarpon Place South. This project location is at the northwest corner of South Gross Ave and East Lime Street. Property is owned RM15. As I stated, this is the kind of the companion project to the one that you just reviewed, Tarpon Place North. This is Tarpon Place South. It will also be eight units, same architecture, and essentially the same style of development. The effective density on this project, if approved, will be 16.4 dwelling units per acre. The parking reduction is proposed to go from 14 to 11 spaces, and again, a 25% reduction in the building setbacks. The conformance with the requirements of the Land Development Code, again, this is all very much identical to the previous application. It does comport with Section 71 for affordable housing projects, is appropriate to existing and compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. It's consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, as well as the housing element of the comprehensive plan. There are no adverse, expected adverse impacts to environmental, historical resources, environmental or historical resources. We do not think the project will adversely affect adjoining property values and will not adversely affect the impact of availability of public facilities. Planning and Zoning Board did review this on October 21st. Again, there were similar issues that discussed with the previous application, Tarpon Place North. The board did recommend approval by a vote of 4-0. Staff recommendation is, recommendation is to approve the application, subject to the two conditions, again, the executing a recordable agreement that ensures that the project will comply with Section 71.03 for affordable housing projects, and number two, establishing the expiration of the conditional use within one year if a site plan is not approved. And with that, I will answer any appropriate, any questions at the appropriate time during the hearing. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to question the city or make a presentation?
Pat Weber, Executive Director of the Housing Authority, excuse me. As a point of information, you may see me back here in six months or eight months asking for an extension of the conditional use. What's going to happen now is that these 16 units, if you approve this one application, are going to be built with, along with a substantial rehabilitation of all our elderly units, which is Lemon Street, Pine Street, Ring, and Walton, and that is all going into one application, being sent to Florida Housing for request for funding, which will be a multimillion dollar request, and if that's approved, these 16 will be built, and you won't see me back here. But if I have to, I'll look for additional funding and hopefully find it within that year. Okay? Thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any members in support? Seeing none, closing statements for anybody? Mr. Mayor?
Any questions? If not, then shall we entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number twenty, resolution 2013-52, application 1364, Lehman, conditional use application for school of special education, scuba school at 528 East Tarpon Ave in the RO zoning district.
Resolution 2013-52, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving conditional use application 13-64 for a school of special education, scuba instruction at 528 East Tarpon Ave, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. Again, this is quasi-adjudicial. We've had the announcement. Are there any persons wishing to testify that have not been sworn?
Do we have an applicant here for this agenda item? No. Oh, you're the seller?
The applicant's right there.
Oh, okay. I think we have some people here that have not been sworn.
Have you folks been sworn? Do you intend to give testimony tonight? I'm going to ask you to stand and raise your right hand, please. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And let me ask first for commission ex parte communications, if any.
Thank you. This is application 13-64 for property at 528 East Tarpon Ave. This is a conditional use application for a school of special education in the RO zoning district. Schools of special education are things like dance, religious, business, secretarial, things of that nature, so a scuba school falls into that category and does require conditional use approval. As stated, the applicant intends to establish a scuba school on the property. They are established in the area already and looking to move to this location or expand to this location. Under the conformance with the requirements of the Land Development Code, they do meet the required parking and necessary requirements of the Land Development Code. There are, the surrounding properties are a mix of commercial and professional office. We don't really think that this would be an adverse impact to existing and planned uses in the area, and we don't find any adverse impacts with the remaining criteria under the standards for review for conditional uses. The staff recommendation is to approve the conditional use with two conditions. One, the retail sales must be limited to merchandise and equipment that is accessory to the primary use of the property, so typically, this is going to be things like mask snorkel fins, those types of things that are associated with the scuba school. And number two, if a business tax receipt for an approved conditional use is not issued within one year of approval, the conditional use shall be considered to have lapsed and reapproval in accordance with Section 209.0, 2.209.00 N3 will be required. Planning and Zoning Board did review this application on October 21st. There were some general questions on the restriction on retail sales and why they were being restricted, and, you know, case in point, this is a RO district, so we're limiting it to, strictly to accessory to what's needed to teach the school. There were some questions about requirements for building a pool, that simply if they do decide to put a pool on the property, it will have to comport with the normal pool requirements. It would be just a building permit through the Development Services Division. And as I said, the Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval by a 4-0 vote, and the two conditions of approval are included in the resolution of approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time in the hearing. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to make or ask questions of the city staff? Yes? Okay, that's fine. Okay, you have the opportunity to make a presentation of your own if you desire to do that, if there are any questions by city staff or from the commission. I can't. Okay. All right, that's okay. Are there any members of the public in opposition to the application? Any members of the public in support? Closing statements. Boy, you guys are easy. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions? Anyone have with that?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I know you've been on the corner of Dotto Canice and Alter 19 for a long time. You've got a great shop and look forward to maybe coming in and getting certified, but it's nice of you to be able to offer that service to the community.
If there are no questions, then shall we entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapany?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We'll now go to item number 21, ordinance 2013-20, special area plan amendments, second reading.
This is ordinance 2013-20, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs special area plan, Sponge Docks and Community redevelopment area, table 3-5, density, intensity, and use standards for the downtown character district, providing for findings, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. That is the second reading of ordinance 2013-20 by title only. This ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on July 31 and October 30, 2013.
Thank you. It's been a little bit of time since you reviewed this the first time, but there really are no new additional information. This is simply amending the downtown character district, removing the maximum density on, for density by transfer, and this is, the downtown character district is primarily Tarpon Ave and a little bit additional area. This is really to promote redevelopment of our vacant parcels in that district. We did receive all the necessary reviews from the state and other reviewing agencies, and there were no comments essentially in the review, so we are free to go ahead and adopt this on second reading. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Vincent? Are there any questions for Ms. Vincent? Any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 22, Resolution 2013-53, Alternative Water Supply Project Injection Well Financial Assurance.
Resolution number 2013-53, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing the mayor to sign a certification of financial responsibility with the state of Florida for RO water supply facility Class 1 injection well system permitting and providing for an effective date here of this resolution, 2013-53 by title only.
Smith?
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director, and we're pursuing the construction, testing, and demonstration of a deep injection well as part of managing the RO concentrate for the alternative water supply project. And what you have before you is a matter of due diligence by the state, who is the permitting authority for injection wells, and the state requires as a condition of permitting that the city provide a certification of financial responsibility, that we have the resources to close the well in the future if ever needed. We are requesting tonight the board's authorization for the mayor to sign this certification.
Thank you. We're hoping we never need to use that, but, any public comments on this item? Any commission comments, questions? The Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We go to miscellaneous items. Item number 23, Request to Negotiate Development Agreement for Property Located at 501 South Walton Avenue. City Manager. Oh, Ms. Lemon?
She can talk first.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. This is a request to negotiate a development agreement with the Bernard Group for the property at 501 South Walton Avenue. In your materials is a letter from the Bernard Group requesting the negotiations to begin. It's part of the development agreement process. Just for a brief background, in August, the board approved the Resolution 2013-39 that approved the sale of the property contingent on six events occurring, and those are outlined in that resolution, one of which is the successful negotiation of the development agreement. The other five include negotiating and signing a contract, resolution calling for a referendum question for the March 2014 municipal election, payment by the Bernard Group for any incidental election expenses by placing the question on the ballot, approval of the sale by a majority of the electorate on the referendum question, and then the Bernard Group ability to obtain all the necessary permits and approvals to develop the property. The RFP has already outlined the sale price, the type of redevelopment, which is an Alzheimer's ALF facility care. They've got a four-phase development schedule and a timeline for it. There were questions at the time of how to protect the city and provide some assurances that if the property is sold, that the developer will do what he intends to do as outlined in the RFP. So this development agreement will basically center on providing some assurances to the city for that. Once the terms are reached, we'll come back to the board and give an outline of what the agreement is. Then it goes to planning and zoning for a hearing, and then it'll come back to the board for final approval. So this is really the first step in the process.
And basically, this is kind of a technicality thing. You've already authorized me by what you did to negotiate a development agreement, but by the terms of the development agreement, they have to apply, and they have to request approval. So I'm requesting approval for what you instructed me to do with that motion back there, basically. So just so we don't, obviously, so we don't have any challenge, the development agreement says after they apply, I have to ask you again. So even though you've directed me to do that, we want to ask, I want to ask you to proceed and make sure there's no challenges or anything later on on this.
Any questions for either Ms. Lemon or Ms. Larson?
Thank you. Not really a question, just a quick comment. I just want to restate my concerns regarding this proposal. I continue to be concerned that we only had one bidder in terms of selling the land. I continue to be concerned about the condition of that building, that they are choosing to not tear down, but that they want to rehabilitate. And I continue to be concerned that I don't feel we ever fully investigated whether or not there are future needs that the city might have for that land. So I just wanted to restate those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say is that, you know, one of the things is, is that as we continue to move forward, whatever happens with that building is going to have to meet city standards. So hopefully, that should alleviate some concerns as we do that. And then for future, if we can talk about what happened, what is the status of what we did as far as the land bank or the monies that we should put a certain percentage? If you could just give a copy of it, I forgot exactly what it says. I know rest of y'all might remember, but I don't remember exactly what that said if we finished it, so.
It's a percentage basis, but it tops at 100,000, which this one would top at the 100,000. The percentage would be higher than that, so it would be...
For the year.
It would, it would be...
For the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
With that... We'll get you a copy of that. We'll get everybody a copy of that also.
Any, any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With that, roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
No.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. We'll now move to item number 24, Discussion, Proposed Changes to Permissible Displays of Merchandise at Sponge Docks.
Before Renee gets up and talks about, just let me give you a brief summary. Obviously, you've all been, all the different meetings we've had from the issue with the Balaris property and all the calls to clean up the docks and get rid of the flea market work, through the process of changing the ordinance and coming up with an ordinance on the sidewalk displays. Obviously, when the ordinance went into place, we went down there and began enforcement's actions on it. There was some property owners who properly contacted me, unlike some who went about other methods, and asked if we review it and looked at some considerations, which my team went down there and looked. What Renee is going to tell you about is not a recommendation from city staff. It's just an analysis of what we were told from the people at the docks and some compromises that could be reached if the commission so thinks so. If the commission thinks that ordinance you passed and the look of the docks is where you want it to be, then we still wanted to give those people who don't like that one last chance to talk and present in a public forum what their wishes are. But you can choose to take no action tonight. The ordinance will be in effect, and we will make sure within 24 hours, everybody's in place or they will be cited. Basically, what it comes down to, and you may get requests tonight on the displays of a lot of other things that we wouldn't even talk about compromising, but basically the two things to look at from the group of people that came to us is basically increase in the height and mainly, let's just say what it is, the ability to put clothes racks down there. Because obviously, the 30-some-odd inches, what it was, was more for the traditional displays for sponges and stuff that's traditionally at the docks, but it eliminates the clothes racks that perforated the sidewalk. But of course, within new ordinances, we've got criteria and stuff, but it disallowed them. So I went down there personally with my measuring, again, although somebody hit my yardstick, so I had to use a version of measurement. Went up and down, there's a variety of sizes, but the, most of the racks are just under five and a half feet. There's no necessity for the 70-inch, 80-inch racks they got down there. People could display clothes with the minimum 30 inches. They could display them on those type of racks, which seem to be the normal racks. So the rationale, if you wish to compromise, that is on that. And mainly, the height is for those clothes, just are you, do you want the look to be the clothes racks along there? That's basically what that does. The other issue that was brought up that we thought had, or the one issue that I thought had some relevance, were the people who had private property porch areas that were completely private property, and what Renee is going to tell you about is the compromise on those people, that if they have an enclosed, completely private property with no use of the city sidewalks, that they be allowed to exceed the 30 inches and have, obviously, more displays than their private property. And those basically are the two points. The third point is just in relation to racks. If you allow the clothes racks, there are one or two businesses that don't have the racks, but had it on, had the dresses and stuff on the side of their building. So the same 66-inch applied could apply for the people along the building if you wish. But basically, again, you can, you can like the look that your ordinance did, and after listening to the concerns or any other ones, you can keep the ordinance as it is, and it's over with, and we'll start enforcing. If you decide you want to look at any of the changes, whether it's the private property changes or the other changes, then obviously, we will begin the process to go back to planning and zoning and two readings of the Board of Commissioners to change the ordinance. And Renee, if you want to cover what you have in the, in our option, not recommendation, our option of compromise.
I think you covered it pretty well, but I'll go ahead and go through the proposed strike-through and underlying changes. And I'll just go ahead and read the, this is, this falls under the definition section of the special area plan, or the Land Development Code portion of the special area plan. It defines outdoor display of merchandise. The outdoor display of retail merchandise along public streets and sidewalks shall be limited to the principal primary furniture of a building. Secondary furnitures shall not be allowed to display merchandise outdoors. Outdoor display areas shall also comply with the following additional criteria. Number one, that criteria is not proposed to be changed from what's currently in the ordinance. The area of display shall be limited to the area immediately in front of and directly adjacent to the primary storefront, regardless of the proximity to the storefront to the street or sidewalk. Displays shall not impede or obstruct accessibility. The second criteria, and this has been altered quite a bit from what was, what's in effect right now, says that displays that encroach the public sidewalk shall only be allowed where the front setback of the primary facade is less than 30 inches from the public sidewalk. Essentially, what we're saying, that, that you will not be allowed to encroach onto the public sidewalk unless your building setback is less than 30 inches from the sidewalk. So if you've got at least 30 inches of area, everything needs to be on, on your private property. If your building is right up against, basically, the sidewalk, then you can encroach up to no more than, you know, no more than 30 inches from the face of the building. Such displays shall occupy space no deeper than 30 inches measured from the face of the building and no higher than 60 inches measured from grade. That had been changed from 36 inches in height to 66 inches in height, like Mr. Cora said, to accommodate the clothes racks essentially. Such displays must be attached to the face of the building such that the displays or racks cannot fall into the public street or sidewalk. Number three is essentially completely new, and it, this is addressing where you have adequate private property that's under roof and part, and at least enclosed with a 36-inch railing or enclosure. And we have, we're also including figures, and these are actually pictures from the docks, of what we consider those to be acceptable enclosed areas, that will get the benefit of some additional display. So number three says, displays that are located entirely on private property and under or within a roofed porch area with a minimum enclosure height of 36 inches may display merchandise on racks up to 66 inches in height with no restriction on placement as long as the displays do not impede or obstruct accessibility. And acceptable, acceptable examples of porches are shown in Figure 1 below. Additional display on the public right-of-way or sidewalk shall not be allowed. Displays on private property that are not within or under an acceptable porch enclosure shall comply with the display limitations in two above. So that would, you'd be back to your 30 inches from the face of the building, 66 inches in height. Criteria number four, addresses merchandise hung from or affixed to the buildings. Essentially, merchandise, it says, merchandise shall not be hung from or affixed to any part of the building except from permanently installed racks attached to the face of the building, not exceeding the measurements established in two and three above. So again, if you're under that enclosed porch area and you want to have some small racks that are actually attached to the face of the building, as long as they're not more than 30 inches deep so that you can hang things on them, T-shirts or wind chimes or whatever, that would be allowed. This still does not allow you to hang things from doors, you know, a lot of people are still hanging merchandise from doors and things like that. So that would be the only exception to hanging anything on the building, and it can't exceed that height limit, 66 inches or 36 inches respectively, whichever category you fall into. And then number four, merchandise shall not be displayed or offered for sale on vacant lots, parking lots, and similarly undeveloped land unless otherwise approved by the city. So that summarizes the changes. Is there anything you wanted me to add to the discussion right now? Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. As we look at, trying to get some comments, I, my assumption is, listening to the city manager, more so than you, Ms. Vincent, is that the one as far as the private property is, has been looked at as a point of fairness in terms of them being able to do some things because they have more of their own property.
Yes.
Okay. That was it. I don't know if anybody right now have any questions for Ms. Vincent, or you'd like to hear from the public? Y'all have, hear from the public?
Hear from the public.
Questions? Okay. What I just asked is that, you know, that, we know that there's a four-minute timeframe. I would ask if everybody would adhere to that, just in case others would like to speak too, so that we can get to a point of maybe resolving some of the issues at hand, and all of us do what we would like to do later tonight. With that, we're open for public comments.
Good evening, Mayor Archie. Mary Coburn, I'm an attorney here in Tarpon Springs, 15 East Orange Street. I have been retained by a group of the shop owners to represent some of the ideas to you, and we appreciate the opportunity to have a review on this ordinance and to address some of their concerns. And I would appreciate maybe a little bit of leeway on time, since I do...
Well, I'm not sure who you're representing. I just say that, just simply for this fact, I don't want you to represent them, and then they decide they want to represent themselves afterwards.
Well, at this point, I'm going to speak on behalf of Quito's Land Corporation, who owns some property down there, and also there are many people, Rio de la Portis, who has two shops. And then the rest may or may not come up here, but there is a group of about 10, 10 shops that I dealt with. What I'm trying to do is get a consensus so that we can try to work together rather than have conflict. It's much better to have consensus. So that's what we're, that's my purpose, and that's what we're trying to do. And I did meet with Ms. Vincent, and we discussed this proposal, and then I went back and discussed it with quite a few of the shop owners. And primarily, the, most people are pretty satisfied with the changes that have been incorporated. The concern is still with the inches, the 66 inches, because there are a considerable number of people who have 72-inch racks. It would require a change and an expense, and they were hoping for the 72-inch limitation. The other thing that I had a concern about in the language of the ordinance or the portion of it, when it talks about primary, principal frontage, there's another section in the code that talks, defines frontage, and it describes it as being a parallel to the road. Some of these shops are actually corner shops, and they open on an intersection. So I want to make sure that in this change that we might make, that we incorporate and allow them on each side, because they are not parallel, but they have frontage on a corner. And there's about three or four shops like that down at Sponge Docks, so that needs to be considered. The other thing was the enclosure. It is private property. They are entitled to use their space. Not everyone is in agreement with the enclosure issue. They were, they would like to see some sort of demarcation. It's my understanding the city's purpose is because they want to be able to make it easy, obviously, for code enforcement to determine where the city property begins and where their limitation is, and if there's barriers, columns, some demarcation, it makes it easier... barriers, columns, some demarcation, it makes it easier for the city to enforce. So that purpose we understand, and they, and they can agree to, but enclosures like the ones that are shown really are primarily for restaurants. Those types of enclosures keep people out. They don't allow for people to enter. And these retail shops don't want to discourage people from coming in. Also, the, the purpose, if you notice, I mean, when you put tables and chairs for a restaurant, you don't want people walking near where people are eating. So that's really why it's quite that restrictive. On a, on a shop, you don't want people bunching through one space to come in, and you don't want them being sort of trapped in there. So to, to make a, a complete enclosure, it's, it's probably not the best idea for, for retail stores. And, and what we were thinking was columns to demarc, or even tile with a, you know, to a line, a tile line, linlaid that demarks. And as far as if displays are a safety issue, that they have to be bolted to the floor, even if it's temporary, like they bring them out during the day and they take them back in at night. They have to be secure so there's no public safety problem. But to actually create this much enclosure can be problematic for these, because some of the shops have some private property space, but it's not very deep. So if you put this barrier, you're pretty much limiting any access by the public, and it, and it makes it unusable. The other, other than that, they were, they were satisfied. There are a few people that sell wind chimes, and they wanted to be able to have wind chimes within the 30-inch space from the ceiling, right up against the property, not overhanging, just right there. Whether you want to make an exception for wind chimes, it would be, you know, that would be the only item that I can think of that really requires hanging, because to hang wind chimes on a 72-inch, it might actually be more of a problem as people pass than, than if they were hanging from the ceiling. But that's, that's going to be up to y'all to decide, and, and the ladies here to talk about it. The other issue was whether or not, and this is a side issue that I don't really want to go into today, but with regard to a solicitation, we, we've come up with some ideas on that. And one of them was to create racks on the exterior of some of these shops for brochures, small racks, you could delineate the size, that allow them to put local interest brochures in these racks, and the people can review them and make a decision. But it helps advertise Tarpon attractions, and also, you know, you could, you could put things from other parts of the state. But it, it allows the shop owners to have a place for that without actually creating a, a problem with solicitation. And it's, it's a nice compliment. But the problem is, because this ordinance is about outdoor displays, and there's also a sign issue, you'd want to try to deal with it when you're dealing with this, this, these other changes. It would be a great opportunity to do that. So I want you to consider that as a, as a, something that might be a good idea, and it might solve a problem that we have down there. But I don't really want to go into that tonight, and I know that's not really the focus. Also, the last point I want to make, shops that are on Dodikanees get a lot of foot traffic, and they get, that's what people see visually when they drive by, and that's where the aesthetic issue was of great concern to the public. But Athens Street doesn't get the traffic that everybody else does. And whether or not you could think about maybe a different standard for Athens Street so that those vendors have an opportunity to get a little more focus from, from the passerby that's walking by, you know, maybe they need a little more display opportunity than the ones on, on Dodikanees. That was my last thought. So that's what we're asking y'all to consider, primarily the one about the enclosure and the height, if you could. And we appreciate the fact that you're revisiting it instead of, and another way to go. So.
The merchant group doesn't represent it.
I'm sorry?
The merchant.
Oh. Also, the people that are here want to make it clear that the merchants group that approached Mr. LaCourse does not represent this group. Apparently, there's some inactivity with that, and it's not a broad-based organization. It's just a few people. So they want to have, have you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know why Mr. Hulis wouldn't use his own time for that, but, you know.
Well, I have good news for you.
Oh, you're going to take the lesson for it?
Everything Mr. LaCourse told you is correct and true. And, uh...
That's it?
No, that's not quite it. I had a meeting and notified everybody from alternate 19, up at the, at the light, all the way down. Who was there was one tenant from the lighthouse. I was there representing the corner of Hope Street and, and Dodikanees. Gloria was there. She has a shop there across the street from Mama Papa's gift shop, and she has some down by the Sponge Exchange and over there at Naomi's. Naomi was there. The man that just rented the Gonnatus gift shops were there. 65% of the people that either own the shops or run the shops on Dodikanees were there. And I was trying to organize some kind of a reasonable outside, uh, display that would be acceptable. And believe it or not, the one that Mr. LaCourse and Renee mentioned was very palatable. The only thing they thought of was, they bought these racks that happened to be 72 inches. That's just what they happened to be, like a tire is a certain limit. Now, the dresses themselves are not 66 inches. There's no woman that's that tall. It would be down to her ankles. But they, that, that would be one little issue there. Then the issue came up about private property. There's only a couple of shops that have private property. I'm one of them. I've got 10 feet of private property out of my door. But to tell you the truth, folks, I'm not here to argue. I'll live by the same rule. I'll voluntarily go by it. Whether it's legal for you to dictate on me or not, I'll go by it. I know one thing's for sure. It's legal for you to dictate the public sidewalks. And I'd hate to see my friends and neighbors lose the right to be able to have their stuff on their privates, on the sidewalks. So I'll live by that one as well. The next one that has some private property is Yaya's gift shop, and she's willing to live by the rule regardless of whether it's private or public, okay? So other than the 72-inch limit, that's one issue. Then, of course, I discussed with Mr. LaCourse in his office. How do you get by with other shops that are down there that have private property, namely the Sponge Exchange? They would have to be under the same rules and regulations because of the way you prepared your ordinance. It said private property is under it. But we can live with the fact that they have a retaining wall and the public doesn't see it. So therefore, I see where Renee and, and Mark came up with a rule that if you have some kind of a little retaining wall for your private property, maybe you can do some more things. So actually, we're all in agreement. But also, I was told by everybody there, the Merchants Association that comes down here and tells you that they want this done, or they agree to this, does not represent them. Now, I'm not saying that I had 100% of everybody there. I had 65% of everybody there. Now, the other 35% just didn't show up. There was one party there from the Sponge Exchange, but he didn't say anything, and he left. Now, how the inside of the Sponge Exchange feels about these laws and rules, I don't know. But I know how Dodikanees Boulevard feels about these rules. The other one there about passing out flyers and stuff, I didn't know about that. We had this meeting, I had this meeting with everybody about three weeks ago. On that, passing out of flyers and talking about business, maybe talking about business on the streets or on the sidewalks is illegal. Now, whether, whether people should, whether you can control what people say or what they pass out on their private property, I don't know. I don't have a business that's passing out pamphlets or talking business in the, outside the door. I noticed your, 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 your letter that you sent out and said, "If you do any talking or passing out papers, if it's not inside of a doorway, it'll be illegal." I don't have a dog in this race, like I told you. But I, I am a citizen of the United States, and I think the First Amendment doesn't take a judge to read it. I think they should be able to do it on their private property. But that's just my opinion, okay? Everything Mr. LaCourse said. So I asked that the 72 inches, if you can live with that, otherwise they can live with the 66, but they would like 72. And no more of this Merchants Association telling y'all that they represent the people on the docks. My group is adamant. I'm only here for one time, because I don't want to be involved with this stuff anymore. I'm here to talk one time, and from now on, you can involve, you can notify Mary Coburn or Chris Leventis. So, and everything she said is true. They had that meeting afterwards, after my meeting, and it, but it coincides with what she has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, the only thing that I would ask, and Ms. Coburn, I'm not going to really get into, you know, I, I've extended some things to you, but we're not, you know, you have the right to come back and wrestle that. But I would ask if anybody would like to talk, if y'all would come forward, so we don't have this, I want to, I don't want to, who's going to, so we can expedite this. So if you'd like to, you could just come and take a seat there, and then that's what will happen. I would not answer any questions from the floor, so there's no sense in raising your hand to me. If you'd like to talk, come down here. You'll have four minutes, up to four minutes, to state whatever you'd like to.
Good evening. My name is Rita Giattris, and I have Rita's Creations on 813 Dodikanees Boulevard. My concern is not about the racks. My racks are as tall as I am, so that makes them petite. I do have an overhang directly in front of my store, which protrudes from the wall out by 25 inches, which is less than what the city is even giving me. My racks do not exceed 25 inches, so I am behind that. What does hurt my business are my chimes. My chimes are a little talk of the town. People stop, they talk, they play with them, they hear them, they like them, they don't like them. From Friday was the last day that they were out there, which means that I had sales on Friday. But come Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and Friday, and Saturday again, I sold not one. So my chimes aren't chiming, and neither is my register. As you can see on the pictures there, that is the frontage of my shop. From the ground to the overhang, it is approximately 80 inches. Now, what everybody else is recommending is that they, uh, uh, place something on the face of the building to protrude out so that I can hang it. But meanwhile, I can just simply hang it. That's all I have to, to say. I would like some consideration in that, because I am not like the other shops. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Maria Seber, 822, 828, and 830 Dodikanees. I'm a business owner and the president of the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association. We're a group of 42 people that includes downtown and the sponge docks. My wife and I drove over an hour to visit these historic sponge docks. We stayed less than that. Unfortunately, this was deteriorated to nothing more than a tourist trap. Almost immediately after getting out of the car, we were accosted by shills trying to get us to eat at the restaurant or shop at their stores. If you are in the area, it might not be worth you going there. Pass this town by. Since Papa's is gone, docks are a ghost town. Not much to do. It used to be exciting. Eat at Papa's, walk around to see all the cool Greek stuff in the small eclectic shops, and then go home feeling like you traveled to Greece. The Greek people are funning, fun-loving, I'm sorry, down-to-earth people. You just don't get that feeling anymore. My wife and I visited the docks in June while on Florida vacation drive. While the history on the docks is interesting reading, the barkers are a total turnoff. Want to go on a cruise, going shopping, ready to eat, enough already. If I want to eat, I'll eat. If I want to shop, I'll shop, et cetera. Even worse is, on occasion, we get a sarcastic thank you if you ignore them. I guess the only way to place, to get customers is to browbeat you in. This has potential, but as others suggest, it needs to change. A few good shops, Spice, one, Cowboy Boots, name two, but many more, dirty and grubby outlets with poor quality tourist trap merchandise. The area has history, and this needs refreshed. It has a feel of a place that the restaurants and owners need to put something back into. Looked into three restaurants, and it all seemed grubby. Shame that this place has potential. These are some of the negative reviews on TripAdvisor. These types of reviews don't just hurt the sponge docks, they hurt downtown, they hurt all of Tarpon Springs. We have lost some great businesses in Tarpon Springs this past year. Spice and Tea Exchange is one that was talked about at TripAdvisor, and we're lucky to have someone else who purchased this shop and opened up another Spice and Tea Exchange. We're getting ready to lose several other businesses on the sponge docks, and who knows, maybe downtown as well. A few miles away, our beaches have been full, our hotels booked, and the Clearwater Aquarium has record numbers. Yet our streets have been empty the past three weeks, three months. I also have chimes, by the way, but they're inside my store. Whatever we're currently doing is not working. We need to change its negative perceptions. We all have a common goal, to bring visitors to Tarpon Springs and to be successful. Let's work together to make that happen. Thank you.
If we could refrain from that, that, that would be helpful, too.
My name's Debbie Thompson. I'm the manager of Gloria's Gift Shop on the corner of Hope in Dodikanees, 793. Today, I had a busload of ladies that came in, and all they did was brag. All they did was just say how delightful the place was. Yes, they did make some purchases. They said it was a wonderful place. They had a wonderful meal, and they were happy that they were there. So I'm not sure about the negative reviews. I can only tell you from my personal experience, the people that have come in in the last two, three weeks, that I have gotten positive reviews from everybody. I am on the corner. We have been doing some remodeling and renovating of the shop with the owner. And we do have wind chimes, and they do hang under a roof on a permanent fixture. They don't come out, but about six inches. And I have a 12-foot, like, leeway there on the side before it hits the public sidewalk. In the front, we have a few racks now. And I am in agreement with our attorney that all we're asking is the 72 inches. We're willing to comply on all the other. But I have not had any negative reviews in four years. I've had only positive feedback from the people that come in the store. And with the snowbirds, I've learned to recognize their names, faces, even their pets as they come through, and they're so delightful to see the charm and the uniqueness of the sponge docks. So I ask that you consider that when you go through this ordinance, whether you change it, whether you enforce it. But again, my name's Debbie Thompson. I'm the manager of Gloria's Gift Shop.
I'm Deborah Parisi, and I'm speaking for 713, 715, and 793, which is Seaside Paradise, my favorite store, and Gloria's Gifts, unfortunately. She couldn't be here tonight. But we're here to say that we totally agree with the attorney and everything that she had to say. We'll conform with whatever. You all decide you want to say we would like the 72 inches, only because that's the way the racks come, and it would cost us money to have them revised and made them in a shorter space. The chimes, some people have, some people don't. I, they hang high, so I don't think they really bother anybody, but, you know, that's up to you. And I have to say, I've been down there for 10 years, and I have never had a negative response. The positiveness that is coming more and more now, since all these festivals and all the tours are coming down, and the buses are coming in, and the hordes of people, my stores are constantly busy. All I hear is positive, what a lovely place, and how nice it is on the water, come down to visit. Business has never been better. The tour buses are doing great for us, and we agree with, I just want to say, we agree with everything that she said, and we hopefully that you will agree with it too, and just mainly raise that up that little bit, and we'll go with the with and anything else that you say. Thank you.
All right. I think they should sign this.
I'm Nina Gray, and I have Yaya's Gift Shop.
I'm Nina Gray, and I have Yaya's Gift Shop. My family's been in the gift business, in the restaurant business, for like ninety years. My mother had one when I, I'm seventy-seven, and my mother had the gift shop before I had it. I have never heard a negative thing unless somebody comes in and is just mean and is disappointed about a price or something, and we can sell them. I have never heard of what that blonde said. Never, ever. And Rita's my manager, and she'll speak for me.
Hi, my name is Rita Kuzarice, and I live on 611 Hope Street. I was not born in this town, but I have been here fifty-seven years, since I came from Greece. And my ancestors were here from nineteen oh five. I love this town as if I was born here. I have three gift shops in Tarpon. Right now, I'm working for Mrs. Gray. I have never, I don't, I'm sure a lot of you have been to Greek island, to Greece, or the Greek Islands, Italy, Spain. The charm of those places are when you walk out, it's the difference. People do not want to go to International Mall. They don't want to go to West Palm. They want to go out and see something different. And if you go to Europe, all the little towns have things hanging out. It's different. That's what they like. It's like going to Greece while you're in the United States. And in all the years I have been in Tarpon, I have never heard anybody that has come that has not had a good time in Tarpon. The prices, we're not in Armansky. If people want to go to St. Armansky or International Mall to open a gift shop, they're welcome to go to. This is Tarpon Springs. People come because we're not that expensive, because they can pass a day with their children walking up and down. They can go and have a good meal and enjoy the Greek culture. That's why they come, for the Greek culture, but first for the sponges. Tarpon Springs is the national, it's the only city in America that has sponges. And that's what we should try to stay, to keep. The sponge boat down at the docks, and I'm sorry to say it, the sponges stay there for two years. They dry up. Now, I know you are not spongers, and you cannot go down there. But maybe you can say to the sponge boats, every time they go out, they can donate five sponges and keep them in a place, and once a year, change them, or every six months. Put some lights on the sponge boat. So when people come, they see something different. We have, we, down at the docks, all the light posts, when they first put them out, they were equipped to have music. So when people walk by, they hear the same music from Papa's Restaurant all the way down. That never happened because the machine wasn't bought. Then we had the spiral lights on the posts. They were beautiful when they were there for about two years, three years. Then the city decided not all of them were lit. So they took them down to replace them. Well, that's been three and a half, four years. The place is dark down there at night. So, you know, it's not just because we put out some dresses, okay? We can live with the new coats. We can live with the new coats. But please, don't overdo it because then you're ruining the beauty of the place. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening. Do we have to sign this?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm David Gouchman, 735. You're going to be spending $1.3 million, I think, come May, down on the docks to fix it up. I don't know why a person who has a store on the side, on the street, has to put more merchandise, i.e. a seventy-two-inch rack of clothing outside on the sidewalk. What aesthetic value does that have to add to the docks? I mean, we, the ordinance that you voted on a month ago is thirty-six inches high. Let them put everything in the thirty-six inches high. The private property, I'm not talking about the private property. I think maybe that definitely should be possibly adjusted. But the public sidewalk, you give people an inch, they take a foot. We had someone down there who used to put a hundred fifty-two on the T-shirts on the awning. That's changed the past month because the ordinance, because you guys had to come down and tell them to take it down. At first, though, she only had stuff out on the sidewalk, probably within the range of twenty-four, thirty inches. And then she went further out. And then she went up to the awning. And then she went all the whole awning. That's what I'm saying. People, you give them an inch, they take a foot. So whatever you decide upon, it's got to be enforced. You're trying to make it beautiful. I don't know how Indian dresses out on the sidewalk makes any, the Sponge Docks look beautiful. Most of the other places like ourselves don't allow anything out. I'm not saying to do that. I'm on the sponge exchange.
If I might, I've got a mic here. I don't want to be yelling. Excuse me, ma'am, Ms. Gray. Everybody was cordial to you when you was talking. If you would allow him, okay, that's okay. I know sometime we get emotional about this. I'm just asking that we respect each other. Everybody have a chance to talk, and then we'll try to do it. Yes, ma'am.
I think there's a few offenders of the ordinance who really go above and beyond where they should go. So, like I say, the seventy-two inch, the sixty-six inch, why you need a dress rack out in front of your store? I really question. Because it's just not dresses, it's shoes, it's hats. It looks like a second, someone walked by and told me yesterday, she has two stores outside and one store in her store. So that's the impression a lot of people get. That's all.
Hello. My name is Kim Gordon, and I'm a very new business owner in Tarpon Springs. We just recently purchased the Spice and Tea Exchange. And I know I need to address you folks, but I first want to say, I don't want to offend anyone. We're all business owners, and we just want to succeed. We want to, you know, have a great business and an incredible community, and we want all of us to do well. I'm standing up, I didn't plan on speaking, but I came up to speak, and I'm glad I'm on the heels of the gentleman in front of me because being a new business owner, when we went on to, and looked to purchase this business, we went and looked at your master plan, and we were excited about what was happening here on the docks. I grew up down in St. Pete, and as you all know, it's changed so much. And we're so proud of it downtown and what they've done also in Dunedin and so many cities around where we live. And here in Tarpon Springs with the culture, the Greek community, it's incredible. And so that's why we came here, because of the community and the culture, but also because of what the projection is and making it look nice. And just on the heels of what was just spoken, I've had a lot of guests come in my store, and that is what I'm hearing, is that it just, along the docks, some of the places, I think because there's so much out on the sidewalks, it looks a bit tacky. And so I'm just here as a voice. And I'm not saying every person that comes in says that. There's wonderful things that people say about the Sponge Docks, but I do hear that a lot in the store. And so I just wanted to be a voice of a business owner, a new business owner, to let you know that, to consider that. Thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Wilson owns, I own Spice Man's Kitchen and Sweetie's Ice Cream Parlor. I must be the thirty-five percent. I didn't get invited to that gentleman's meeting, either one of our shops. And I'm also the thirty-five percent that I do hear negative comments. As Kim says, we need to be a community that sticks together and compromises and organizes. And I thought that's what this thirty-six-inch displays was all about. If you look, there's some people like Lori's Sponges, I'm sorry, Lori's Soaps, that has nice displays, and Jimmy down at the end, the sponge, yeah. I mean, he's got really nice displays. I'm sure there's a compromise here someplace that we can make. But unfortunately, I hear a lot of negative, too. What worries me is during season, when there's so many people on the streets, you have to walk in the street because the displays are hindering people. You see kids running and old people with wheelchairs trying to maneuver on the sidewalks. So, you know, that's a big concern also. I'm sure there's a compromise, but I hear the negatives more than I do the positives. Thank you.
Good evening. I promise I'll be short. Chris Laventis from 776 Dodikanees Boulevard. We're property owners there. We also rent 801 Dodikanees Boulevard as well. I'm not sure how the existing ordinance came into place. One of my main concerns is that as one of the premier areas in Tarpon Springs, that us as property owners were not notified of such a sweeping change, rather supposedly represented by a few people on Sponge Docks. So that's a concern for me. Granted, I should pay attention to the dockets and come to the meetings, but, you know, I have three businesses and teach, and there's a lot of stuff to keep on top of, so that's my bad. I feel the way the ordinance is now is very, very restrictive. I've been on the docks since I was five years old. We've had our business now for over twenty-five years. If you go anywhere, anything that could be the best product in the world, there's going to be negative reviews. You can't please everybody. I've learned that. I'm not that old, I'm not that young, but I've learned you cannot please everybody. So we're going to have negative reviews. I do feel there has to be some type of ordinance. People can't just throw out whatever they want, hang, you know, five hundred T-shirts on the awnings. I agree with that. At the same time, I don't agree with being this restrictive. We have spent a lot of money, and this is our livelihood. And the city can't tell us, you know, put only thirty-six inches. You know, we sell sponges, we sell shells, we sell items from Greece. Some of us sell higher-end gifts. That's fine. We're all here to make a living. I have not seen a decline in the business. In fact, our store had a twenty percent increase last year. So whatever we're all doing down there, I think we're doing it right. So I'm not sure where all this crying is about us not making money. Because, you know, knock on wood, we're doing just fine. And we have stuff outside that's over thirty-six inches. We sell, you know, dresses from India. We sell sponges. We sell products from Greece. We sell all kinds of things. So it doesn't matter what you sell. So we are for the proposed changes. You know, seventy-two inches we defined only because that's how they make the racks. You can't buy them at sixty-six inches. That's just a fact. And I will reiterate one more thing that a few people have said, is that the Merchants Association does not represent the majority of the owners down there. They just don't. I've been a member in the past, back in the early nineties. Unfortunately, nothing really got done, so I backed away. But they do not represent us. You know, I respect what they're trying to do. They're just not, they're not our voice. I just want to make sure that's understood. Thank you.
Is that it? Because I'm going to close public comments. Okay. First, I appreciate everyone coming, you know. I just say this, is that I think that everybody that sits up here wants every business owner to be successful. That's just the bottom line. There's nothing that happens up here is to hurt a business, but it's all in trying to do what collectively the thought is to help businesses. It was mentioned about that million dollars and going to be probably more than that, investing in that area. Not because we want to hurt it, but because we want to infuse some resources there to help it. We all know that the Sponge Docks area is different. It's treated differently. I know, and I appreciate the comments that Mr. Laventis said about telling them what to do and how, a lot of these things that we're talking about there is not even allowed anywhere else. It's not even allowed, other businesses can't even do it. So first and foremost, we'd like you to know that we understand that it's different there. Now, for me, I wish that a lot of people that came up and said that the Sponge Dock Merchants Association don't represent them would get involved, and they would represent them. I wish that. It would make our job a lot easier because I hear people saying, "We like the festivals, we like all of the things, we liked having more down there." And who's doing that? It's the same people that just say don't represent you. You know, so it's one way, it's all right that we reap, but they don't represent us. You know, so I would hope that what happens out of this meeting is that you say, hey, you know what? I want to be involved. So maybe what Ms. Wilson said, there is a compromise. I like compromises. I think it's a give-and-take world, if you can. If you have reasonable people looking at the common objective is everybody makes money, people come to Tarpon, they're happy, they want to come back, they want to bring other people. I mean, that to me is the bottom line. And where is that compromise? You know, I don't know. I mean, you know, sometime they say when everybody's a little unhappy, then it's a win-win. But I really don't. But I wanted to say that before I listened to even my colleagues, is that, you know, I wish that we would look at how do we work together. It saddens me that we say that, hey, that that group don't represent, but that's the group that always coming up here asking about doing things to promote Tarpon. You know, that says something. At least it does to me. And if any of y'all know me, y'all know that, hey, I'm not one to just, you know, go and whisper in the back about, hey, it seemed to be, you know, not right. I'm going to say that upfront. It's that I wish that we would work together. When we start talking about spending that million dollars, I don't want it to be, it's a hard sell again because we're trying to figure out who represents, who's, no, we don't want to do this, we don't want to do that. And I've said publicly before is that when we get down to that, I'm one that there's other places that say, don't spend money down in the docks. I don't know why y'all keep spending that money down there. There are other needs in Tarpon. And when we don't work together, it makes it easier to go other places and do other things with the dollars. Now, we're at a point where there's an ordinance that's in place, and, you know, I know that sometime when I'm talking to city managers, say, hey, you know, we have to do, you know, some things. And I'm, like I say, I'm open to a compromise. I know that, you know, we have something here that we're considering that is being brought forth. It's not a recommendation from the staff. I assume that it's, what has come out of that meeting, and I wish that, you know, in openness, is that everybody was invited to the meeting. So if the people in the Sponge Dock Merchants Association weren't to come to the meeting, they would have come, you know. So we won't have an adversarial position. Now, it's, which side do we take? Do we take this side? Do we take this side? Who's representing who? You know, because, you know, it doesn't do us any good. Everybody here, I know you normally come to commission meetings, you know, but there might be something else that you like to do with your time instead of coming up here trying to work this situation out. And I always wish that it could be worked out outside of the room and not in here. Because then it's us in a sense trying to act on your best behalf and sometimes you're not in agreement with that. But if any part of what was proposed was agreed upon here, it would then go to planning and zoning?
Yes, if we think of changing any portion of the ordinance, it would go back to the next, go to planning and zoning and then it'd have to go two readings for a new ordinance with the changes in those. Again, if you decide to leave it like it is, then it's as it is and within 24 hours we'll ensure compliance or take enforcement action.
And like I say, I like to listen to what everyone else has to say, you know. You know, my, one of the thoughts is, is that, you know, and like I say, I appreciate anybody that come up and say, "Hey, you know what, there is a way out. There is something that we can look at as give and take. I'm not for it, but hey, listen, we can kind of live with some things that I don't think is best and we do some things." And I think everybody want to have things cleaned up somewhat. Because everybody kind of agree that some people just, they just go, just overboard with pushing the envelope, that they can get all that they can. If you're not going to say nothing to somebody that's taking one inch, I'm going to go ahead and take, you know, five, six feet. And maybe in looking at some of this, if it went to planning and zoning, it gives everybody an opportunity to maybe talk, maybe look at a viable option and alternatives. That's good. And our first thing I'll say is that, you know, I know some people say seven, the two inches is not good, but you know, 72 inches seem to be better than 30, I meant 66 is better than 36. You know, you don't have 72. I know you like to have 72. Some people like to say, "Don't do nothing. Let us just do whatever we want to do." So, you know, in life, I think that, you know, there is some give and take. I don't know.
Can I say something before you go? Just a
Yes, sir.
...review after listening all. Again, it was a proposal we brought to you. We tried to give you some form of consensus. Obviously, there's the issue of those who don't like the higher racks and closing or not. I mean, but if there was a compromise, I can tell you, I measured those who say they can't get under, you know, the 64 to 66 inch racks, they sure are down there because the predominant ones I measured meet that. And I can tell you, the 72 inch racks or above I saw were more unstable and I wouldn't go for them for safety reasons anyway. So those are available. They do not look like they're that expensive. And again, there wasn't anything lower than, it seemed to be the standard size with the dresses not touching the ground and I went down and measured most of them. So those property owners who say they're not there, you know, they can go look at it. A lot of the issues go back again to this, what is the flea market look? When I was down there looking for this compromise, I mean, we heard everybody on the Bellerus issue saying we didn't want a flea market down there. We heard the attorney and her people saying, "Go down and force everything." Which myself and the chief chuckled at because we knew everybody in the audience who said, "Go down there and do that," had code violations. All their outdoor stands were illegal from the start. We knew that, but y'all came and told us to go do it and we did our job. We came up, the ordinance as it is is fair, but we went down to look, is there any other grounds? And I can tell you, you know, again, from our point, there are enough of them down there. If you thought the clothes racks were appropriate down there, everybody can get by and go by and talk to the property owners and stay under that five and a half feet. As far as the property owners with the private property, most of the ones I talked to down there had no problems with the rails or the separation. I don't know what's changed, but one of the main reasons that is for safety. It's nice that you use your private property, but no matter how you try to mount them in the ground or do all that, the thing we want to keep from and why you have on the ordinance forever affixing them to the buildings is the safety issue. We don't want them rolling into the sidewalk. We don't want them tipping over into there. And at least if you have at least that 38th barrier, it's a barrier to keep them from rolling, it's to stop them from a complete fall on the sidewalk. And I would say that there is no compromise you should do. Obviously, those businesses are getting the advantage of a little more area. The compromise they have to do is make sure they've got the separated porch so there's no chance of it getting on the sidewalk or impeding that. And I think that's an important part. And if you don't consider doing the railing or the separation, then forget that issue and let them adhere to the rules that are there. Again, we, most of the people here, we talked to on the issues, we even add the one about the building. So I think you have the compromise there if you want to go to it, that we can go. Obviously, most of you out here know me and some of you who are yelling at me for the thing know my position hasn't changed for 20 years. And when we fought about this 20 years ago, I said, "Take them all off the sidewalk." My position hasn't changed and obviously the commission did a compromise for mine because I'd recommend they all be gone and then it'd be fair. You couldn't yell about fairness or anything else because they're all gone. So I think we've already got a lot of compromises and again, a lot of it's safety, a lot of it's for the traffic along there. I think we've accommodated the private property people. Again, the issue is yours. If you want those clothes hanging on buildings or racks or not, that's a simple area you want to look at on there. But a lot of the situation is safety and please don't bring up the Athens Street thing because Athens Street is an example that we should take everything off. Athens is narrower, Athens is more dangerous. And if we reviewed or looked anything with Athens, we would take all the sidewalk displays off there because there's no way, there's not even safe room for those on Athens Street. So the people on Athens Streets probably need to be happy with what they've got because I'm sure myself and the police department's recommendation because of the length of the sidewalk and the problems there were that they'd all be taken off. So I would think again before I brought up a review of Athens Street because I can tell you that would probably be the recommendation. So I just wanted to say those things as a result of some of the comments made. And I want to thank Mr. Hulles for the first time in 30 years saying he agrees for a most part of what I said. That's a first in 30 years and I like to note that, so.
Vice Mayor Slatter.
Thank you. I did, since we wrote the ordinance, the new ordinance, I drove down Dodecanese and I have to say it's quite an improvement. I would think that the way that we wrote our ordinance without allowing the racks outside would be an opportunity for people to come into your store and see your entire store. You know, we are starting a huge project down there and, you know, spending over a million dollars, I think probably May or so. And I think that's also going to be an improvement for the Sponge Docks. We do want to see everybody succeed down there. But, you know, we just, we need to start sticking to our codes that we write and just make it more attractive for our tourists to come in. We do have, there was something mentioned about having racks put out for flyers or brochures. Well, we have a chamber that commerce that is open, I think, seven days a week, which supplies those flyers. The Welcome Center or what we call the Train Depot was going to start being open more, also has all those flyers. So I really don't like the idea of having racks outside for flyers. But again, I think we approved an ordinance and I think that we should stick to what we approved at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody jumping out there, you know, but I'll give everybody an opportunity. Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. Before I begin, I do have a question for Ms. Vincent. In other areas of the town, and I know that like in the downtown, if you wanted to have a, if you had a cafe and you wanted to have chairs and tables and an umbrella outside, you have to have a special license, right? Is it a license to encroach?
It's actually, we have a separate sidewalk cafe license just for sidewalk cafes and that's the only thing that you can have technically outside anywhere else in the city.
Okay, so if you wanted
So it's an application.
So in other areas of the city, if you wanted to display something outside on the sidewalk, would you, what would be the process? Would you have to apply for a license to encroach?
You cannot, you're not allowed to have outdoor displays anywhere in the city except in the Sponge Docks by the way the code, by the code
By the way of the code, okay.
Again, except for the cafes, which is
Except for sidewalk cafes.
The sidewalk cafe, right.
Except for sidewalk cafes.
So it truly is a privilege?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if there was an issue of a license to encroach or if maybe there was, if other people in the city had to apply for a license to encroach. You know, I totally agree that, and I've heard for a long time that no matter what you do, not necessarily in the Sponge Docks, and it's kind of said in a joking manner, but no matter what you do in Tarpon, nobody's ever going to agree 100%. And I think that's, this is a perfect instance. And I think it becomes a little bit more intense or the debate gets a little bit more heated when you talk about people's livelihoods. And that's essentially exactly what we're talking about. Some people believe, look, by displaying these t-shirts and displaying these dresses, I get more business. Other people believe by taking away the t-shirts and the display racks, the storefronts look more beautiful and I get more business. So truly what we're looking for tonight and as we move forward is in fact a compromise. It's just a matter of how do we arrive at the compromise. I've been to Greece, I've been to other Mediterranean towns and without a doubt, there are outdoor displays very much like what you see in Tarpon Springs. That said, we're not in Greece, we're not in the Mediterranean, you know, we're in the state of Florida and this is a coastal town and we, you know, it's a working waterfront. The pictures of the storefronts, if you drive down Dodecanese Boulevard and you look at the storefronts in the mornings, in my opinion, they totally are more beautiful when you can see them. That said, I don't have a shop in the Sponge Docks, I don't have a shop on Dodecanese Boulevard. I can sympathize with everyone who does and believes that display racks outside help attract business. And I would say to a degree, they probably do. Again, it's just a matter of what that degree is. So as it relates to the height of the rack, I think that's still an area that we need to discuss a little bit more. We went to 30 inches. There was, I was, you know, pretty blown away that there weren't more people in the audience to say, "Hey, wait a minute, we don't necessarily agree with the 30 inches." And so I'm glad to see you all here tonight. As it relates to the private property, I am 100% in agreement that if you have private property and you want to display things outside and you adhere to whatever this, whatever this language is in this code, you ought to be able to do that. So I totally agree with that. Coming from a family who had a clothing business, I'm totally aware that those clothing racks, a lot of them have tabs where you can adjust the height of the rack. So, you know, I understand that they make, they only make racks 72 inches, they only make them 30 inches, a lot of them are adjustable. You know, to me, the point of having a display rack is to try and draw people to your business. I don't think a whole lot of people are going to walk up to the display rack and buy from the display rack outside. Maybe they are, but I think the main objective there is to draw people to your business in the hope that they come inside by seeing the types of goods that you have to offer from the outside. So, so the height, you know, I think 66 inches is a compromise from the 30 in between the 72. You know, I understand that there's, that people want higher racks for dresses. You know, maybe if we settled on a 30 inch rack, you would still get the appeal of having people see your merchandise from outside but being able to come in and see your dresses I'm definitely on the, on the private property, I'm 100% in agreement with that. I could go either way on the 30 inches or the 66, but I sympathize with both parties and, you know, I do agree that we're getting ready to spend a bunch of money in the Sponge Docks and there is a little bit of a need for a change. Some people would say, you know, we don't want to change too much because that's in fact our heritage and I agree with that and I don't ever want to lose our heritage. But I do truly believe that by taking some of the things away from the storefronts, it is a more beautiful street when you can see the facades. Those are my comments at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Rappel?
Thank you. I do want to thank each one of you for coming here tonight and voicing your concern. I do want to echo what the mayor said, that the more united voice we have that comes before the board, that the easier it does make it for us to come to compromises. I know that's much easier said than done, but that should be a goal overall, I think. The Sponge Docks are a true asset to this town. I think this board's commitment to the docks should be evident in what we're doing with the investment down there on the docks with the penny money. I do think there are some good compromises in this ordinance. I just do want to ask the chief, has there ever been, to your knowledge, any safety issue, any call with racks falling down or people hurt or?
Not to recall, but I have to go back and extrapolate that day if we haven't.
Okay, all right.
Not in recent memory.
And Mr. Lecour, you said most, most of the racks there are below, are below 72, 72, the inches now, right?
Yes, the ones I was measuring, a lot of them are in the 64, 60, a lot of them were in that 64 area. We just went to the straight because some were 64, some were closer to 66. So five and a half feet is just the, just the number to give a couple more inches leeway. But there were many of them that were 64 inches, which is meets under it. And again, they weren't just short, they were long enough dresses where the dresses wouldn't hit the ground and it would be display. So again, not knowing about racks, that's why I went down and was measuring them all and the 66 seems to accommodate a lot of the ones down there.
And I am in favor of the, when there is private property involved, having, having more leeway there, so long as what we're allowing you to have does not, is secure to your, to your property, cannot, you know, within reason, fall down and hurt somebody. And I also, I understand the difference though between what's closed in for restaurants and what's more open for retail shops. Is there anything else? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank everyone for being here this evening and for making your comments this evening. As was stated, the Sponge Box, Sponge Docks are very special and it is important that we treat the Sponge Docks differently. And as Commissioner Tarpani pointed out, we do treat the Sponge Docks differently. The rules that are in place right now are different than those rules that are in place in other parts of the city. For the most part, I'm in favor, as the vice mayor said, of letting this ordinance, seeing it through and seeing, seeing if it can create some positive changes in the Sponge Docks area. The only, the only issue I might have is taking a look at that number three, which deals with the private property issue. I could see potentially adding some of that language, but other than that, I'm actually content with seeing through the ordinance that we have at this time.
Thank you. I guess now we, we try to decide where do we go from here if, to me, if even if there's a consensus that we want to look at that second portion, is really saying we want to look at this ordinance in terms of sending it to planning and zoning?
Well, kind of what I would say is, again, there's different portions of it. If the consensus, if there was consensus on the private property issue sent into them, again, there may be some changes, you know, again, we'll see recommendations from planning. We would just send the private property portion. If there isn't, if there is or isn't a consensus for the moving the height, then we wouldn't bring that, if there's not a consensus for the board to bring that back forward, then we certainly wouldn't want to bring it to looking at a change of height unless we got a consensus. So those are, those are the two issues that we look for consensus on. If there's just one of the issues, we would bring one to the planning and zoning board for review. If you have a consensus on looking at the size of the racks and seeing, then we would bring that one too. But you can differentiate and, and we would just, we would only bring forward the issues that you want to look at. So I like that you deal with them individually on the consensus of what to bring back and what to finalize so we can finally tell the people, if you're not going to deal with the height, we need to tell the people, the height is not going to be looked at and you need to adhere to it.
Well, I said that for this is that, you know, it seemed like even from a staff perspective, you know, the second part is for, as the businesses need to be looked at in terms of maybe some type of adjustment and trying to address it, even if it's one of the enclosure or the rest. And the thought that I have is that, you know, if we looked at that and you say it was a consensus for each part, doesn't mean that the planning and zoning board looking at this ordinance can't still make recommendation as far as advisory capacity to us. Now, whether we change anything Now, whether we change anything at all when it comes back remains to be seen, but my thought is too, is that maybe there is that compromise out there. Maybe the people that's out here would talk with each other and maybe make some type of agreement that they would even when they go to planning and zoning, is not from an adversarial perspective of what looks best. How can we work together to make it happen? Because, you know, I have no problem in supporting the, looking at it from the businesses for as that barrier that you've discussed in terms of what needs to happen for a safety concern, sending that to planning and zoning. But I, I don't believe that we could then tell planning and zoning, "Don't look at nothing else in this ordinance," and don't give us no type of advice, because they are always looking at everything and then basically saying, "This is something that we would recommend whether we take it or not."
Yeah, what I was just saying is, we, if you only consent to that item, and we would bring back the new ordinance to planning and zoning that would only have that item, and if they brought up to add some things, we need to look at that, obviously, but we would only bring back to them that portion. But obviously, you've seen what happened to planning and zoning meetings and the recommendation, but there, there could be a lot of recommendations that come out of the planning and zoning meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
So, we're looking at some type of consensus, this is a discussion item, and we're looking at, you know, in a sense, where do we go from here? Commissioner Tarpani?
My question is this, when, when we first adopted this ordinance and it first went to the planning and zoning, it was just set at thirty inches, there was no...
Thirty-six.
Or thirty-six, there was no talk of, of our proposed sixty-six, correct?
Right, correct.
I mean, if we're talking about going back to the planning and zoning and then having our first and second reading after the planning and zoning, I would say, give the planning and zoning the opportunity to weigh in on both number three and the new change potential compromise to number two. I mean, if they haven't already seen it, and they've only seen the thirty-six versus the potential sixty-six, and we're going to have one way or another the final say after their meeting, let them have the opportunity to weigh on, weigh in on both items. Just an idea.
Oh. Mr. Beth? I mean, I, I would be in support of, though, of, of sending these changes to, though, to planning and zoning, getting their input, and then we'd still have first reading and second reading to make more changes based on what they advised, or more input or what have you. And, well, a part of me does want to say, "Well, let's just keep the ordinance we passed." You don't want to just pass ordinances because people approach, "You want to change this or that," but that's what I think, not to be cheesy, this local democracy is about, and people coming forward with changes, new ideas, and if we can meet in the middle, which that, that might be, you know, not thirty-six inches, but, but higher, but lower than sixty-six or what have you, I believe that, that's a good thing, and the dialogue as well. My one question that I did, I did forget to ask, is there any exception? There was the lady with the wind chimes, or, and not to single out one merchandiser or one store, people with maybe perhaps unique items they sell, is, I mean, I assume the city manager's door or Renee's door is always open to come talk for ideas of how they can display their merchandise that's within code, or, you know, not, not make it sound like we just shuttered them up, you know?
And, and I, I think, I think our problem with that is just the equitability of it.
Whatever the height of the rack is, you get that type of rack, and that's what...
You put your wind chimes on a rack, exactly.
...chimes on the ceiling and then not allow, I mean, I don't know, doing the distinction of an individual.
Right.
I can't do wind swirling, so I can't do...
We'd have to be consistent if we...
You know, if my displays, outdoor lights or something, you know...
So, if we ban T-shirts, it should be banned altogether, it shouldn't be pieced up.
Yeah, I would like to keep it consistent, you know, with the display height is, you know, sixty-six inches or seventy-two or whatever it is, you know, then that's what it is. You can certainly hang a wind chime, you know, on a rack, but, I mean, I understand it's not ideal for everybody, but I think it's a slippery slope, you know, when you start making exceptions for one and not for another.
Well, I'd be in favor of sending this over, over, over to, to P and Z for all the points, all the changes, not saying that's what, that's what we're going to go with, but just to get their thoughts and input. They're, they're the advisory board that we have, we have, we, we have put, put in place for things like, 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 like this, and I would like to hear their, their thoughts. Thank you. What, um, what will be in effect tomorrow? Is the current ordinance in effect at this point in time?
Can I weigh in on that?
Please do.
From an enforcement perspective, if you're thinking about changing this thing, it really puts us in a tough position because you start enforcing something, and then the message is, is going to be different. So, you know...
Yeah, and in my mind, the only thing I'd say we would not enforce, the only thing, all the rest of the ordinance, I want to make sure all y'all are clear, everything else, the only thing we wouldn't enforce is the, is the height, the height issue on the racks. They still have to be affixed to the building, the thirty-inch rule still stays, all of that would still stay, but we would refrain from anything that you are looking at possibly changing, we would have to refrain from that particular case of it. But the rest of the ordinance and stuff would, would, would remain in effect and would be enforceable.
The only part that I'm currently looking at possibly changing would be the private property aspect that we've discussed.
Well, the, the thing about the private property aspect is that nobody should be doing that now because they don't have the, the right to do it. So, as far as enforcing that, that's not a problem. You know, for, for me is that, I don't know whether you could agree with what Commissioner Tarpani suggested, or what Commissioner Lawson, or you totally disagree with doing any of this, you know?
I, I'll just state again, we wrote an ordinance, and I think we should see it through for a while.
Okay. For me, I, I can look at sending this to planning and zoning, and I'm going to tell you why. One is that, you know, anytime we have an ordinance, you know, it's always opportunity to look at it for any type of adjustment. Now, whether something happens to it or not after you go to planning and zoning remains to be seen. My thought is, those that are blatantly violating everything should, should take this as an opportunity to look at some, an opportunity to conform, you know? That's just the word to the wise. The other thing is, is that I would say is that, again, is that somebody that was on, is still on the Merchants Association said that there is opportunity for compromise, that the others that look at them with some disdain would say, "You know what? I think we can reach out to them to try to see how we all can work together," which would make it a little better when it goes to planning and zoning, but not only that, because planning and zoning is just an advisory board when it comes back here. Just my thoughts to you. I like everybody, so it's not a matter of, "I like Merchants Association more than I like you, and you got sixty-five, they got thirty-five." When it comes up here, that means that everybody out there is looking to the people up here to make a decision. I would rather for you to be able to work together and come up with something that's reasonable. So, I believe the consensus is, is that we would move forward. The other thing is, is that, I'll just say this, you know, I, I, any calls anybody want to have, or if you want to meet with me in terms of why I said it, is that I think that you can't be saying, "The Merchant Association is bad, they're all bad people, they don't represent us, and they're the ones that's bringing the proposals to the city to do more in the dock area so that we all can make money." I think it would be good for you to be a part of that, then you can voice your opinion and let them know how you feel and how we can work together to make the dock area better. So, with that, we'll look at moving ahead, and we thank everybody for coming out, and, you know, for those that don't know, we, we do this every other Tuesday in case you want to come back.
Just want to clarify, on that notice that we sent them down, that we had the dates of the planning and zoning and everything on that notice, so everybody was hand-delivered or mailed, if you're an owner, those things, so we don't have any issue of we weren't notified. Just be a warning, so spread the word just in case there are those who might say they're not notified, we hand-delivered to everybody, so.
I guess it does. Read it.
It, it is, it's on there. Go read it again.
Y'all already disagree, again, you know, everything is back to normal. But with that, we'll adjourn our meeting, and we'll go to staff comments, chief?
No comments, mayor.
City attorney?
No comments.
City manager?
No, sir.
Madam clerk?
No comments.
Uh, Commissioner Tarpani? Vice mayor?
No comments.
And Commissioner Banff?
I have to get to the airport.
Who you want to talk to while this?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawson?
I'm going to talk for ten minutes.
I'm going to walk out.
No comments.
And I have no comments, so we'll adjourn this meeting at eight fifty.